This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody. You are at the City of Kingston Planning Board Monthly Meeting. Today is July 20th, 2020. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Kingston, and I will be the organizer for the virtual meeting this evening. Before we begin our meeting, I just want to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate the system efficiently and respectfully. We ask that members of the public and the press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 p.m. on Friday, July 17th, 2020. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at skhill@kingston-ny.gov, mailed, or placed in the Dropbox outside of City Hall. Written comments received specific to any of the public hearings were strongly encouraged and will be read at the beginning of the said hearing discussion. This evening, we did not receive comments by that deadline of June 17th. However, two comments were received earlier this afternoon on the proposed rezoning petition. Those have been circulated to the board members, and you have the opportunity to review them, hopefully, in advance. If you have any audio issues, please send a text message to the following number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that no phone calls will be answered during the meeting. The number to text again is 845-443-0416. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into an attorney-client conference if necessary. Materials for this meeting may be found on the City of Kingston's website, Once you are on the homepage, scroll to the bottom under Meetings, and where you see the Planning Board Meeting posted, click on the Agenda packet, and you will find the hyperlinks in that meeting agenda. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times. And on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Suzanne. My name is Wayne Platt. Welcome, everybody, to the July 20th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. Introductions of board members. Again, my name is Wayne Platt. I'm the chairman. We have Mary Jo Wiltshire, Matt Gillis, Evan Roach.
Here.
Vince Archer, Katie Bowarski.
Here.
We also have Suzanne Cahill, obviously, who's the Planning Director.
Here.
Kyla D-Day, the Assistant Planner. And we have Assistant Corporation Counsel Daniel Gartenstein with us. We are having some members have difficulties logging on, so during the deliberations right now, Kevin and Vince, you'll be included in the voting, okay?
Okay.
Regular business, we are adopting the adoption of the June 15th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting transcript and decisions. Everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at that. Anybody have any deletions or additions that they would like to see in there that may have been missed? Okay. Good? All right. Wayne Platt, I am making a motion that we adopt the June 15th, 2020 Planning Board Minutes and transcript and decisions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Matt.
Matt Gillis.
Gillis has a second. All in favor?
We'll vote, Wayne.
Wayne Platt is a yes. Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Evan Roach?
Yes.
Vince Archer?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is adopted. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Item number two is 38-50 Thomas Street. It's a special permit renewal for emergency shelter use. Section Block and Lot is 56.25-444. Secret determination, Zone 03. It's in Ward 5. Family of Woodstock is the applicant owner. Any of our callers here tonight to weigh in on this one?
Yes, we have Michael Berg is on as a caller, so let me unmute him.
Oh, Michael.
Okay, Michael, you are on. You can introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Berg. I'm Family's Executive Director. The two buildings on the site that we're discussing are the Darmsdatch Shelter for the Homeless, which is a 21-bed shelter for homeless, single individuals primarily in recovery. The second building is a 27-bed shelter for homeless families, the family in. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Michael, this is Wayne Platt. Have there been any changes since the last time you've been through?
The only change is the impact of COVID-19. The net result has been that we've been forced to lower the occupancy rate of the family in by a few beds because we can't put more than one family in a room. Other than that, no, there haven't been changes.
All right. And Sue, any police reports that jump out at us for that?
There was one.
I did not see anything out of the ordinary. You should have received a copy of the KPD report for the past year.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. The previous term was one year, and Sue, that is, one year is what?
That is mandatory by code, yes.
Let me see if I can wait up down here. Further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will, this is Wayne Platt again, I will make a motion that we approve item number two for a period of one year with all original conditions.
Wayne, this is Sue. Can you please just recognize this as a type-two action under Seeker?
Did that.
Oh, I didn't hear it. It cut out then. Okay.
Okay, so under Seeker, this is a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. Time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number two for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that?
That will.
Gillis, favor. Wayne Platt, yes. Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Charles Palocco, are you there?
I am here, finally.
Okay.
Your audio.
Excuse me.
I am going to, Wayne, I'm going to go through that roll call vote again because your audio is cutting out on me. Wayne, you were a yes.
Yes.
You said yes. Matt Gillis, I have you down as saying yes.
Yes.
Vince Archer?
Yes.
Okay. So Wayne, let the record know that Charles Palocco is now here and will be part of our discussion for item number three.
So am I done?
Yes, you are, Michael. Thank you.
Yes, Michael.
Thank you to the board, and hopefully, I'll see you again in a year.
Okay, take care. All right. Moving on to item number three. 420 to 426, 428-434, and 438 Abiel Street. The lot line deletion of the lands of Historic Kingston LLC and Kingston Wilderness LLC. Section Block and Lot is 56.50-6-3.100-1, 56.50-6-1. Secret determination, Zone RFR Coastal Zone, Ward 8 and 9. Historic Kingston LLC and Kingston Wilderness LLC are the applicant's owners. Anybody on the phone to talk about this?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Patrick? Patrick? Are you here for item number three? The property's on Abiel Street?
I can't hear him.
I cannot either.
Right, nor I.
Okay, you want to just move forward with this anyway, or?
Yes.
All right, so where are we on Abiel? How far out? Where is this?
Kyla just put up her screen.
Okay. So where is this in relation to, where are we on Abiel Street? What's the closest property here that I would know?
Closest one would be the existing two-story building. That is the owned by Kingston Wilderness and Historic Kingston Marina. It would be to your left.
Am I the only one hearing feedback right now, audio?
No, it's very bad.
Very bad.
I don't hear anything.
Very bad static.
Anyone on an iPad?
Oh, yeah.
Vince, can you mute yourself?
Yep.
Okay, that might help. Okay, that does help.
Okay. All right, so Sue, is this pretty straightforward, this thing?
I believe so. It's basically a lot line revision.
All right. Anybody have any questions on this? No? Okay. Going into Seeker, this is considered a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required for this. Really, the only thing that they have to adhere to is Board Policy 6, Sue, on this?
That is correct, and we would like buildable areas for the vacant lot to be shown.
Okay.
And written descriptions will need to be provided.
All right, so at this time, I will make a motion that we approve, this is Wayne Platt, approve item number three with Board Policy 6, buildable area to be shown on the vacant lot, and also written descriptions for this. That is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Evan Roach, second.
Is that Chuck?
Kevin.
Kevin, okay. Second. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palocco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Evan, excuse me, Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Evan Roach?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. Okay. Moving on to item number Hold on for one second. All right, item number four is 125-127 O'Neill Street and 131 O'Neill Street. Lot line deletion of the lands of Timothy and Ellen Doyle. Section Block and Lot is 48.334-2-21 and 48.334-2-20. Secret determination, Zone R2, Ward 2. Timothy and Ellen Doyle are the applicants and owners. Anybody besides the applicants or owners, anybody on the line want to talk about this? Okay. We have a map for this. Sue, Kyla? So Sue, are we basically bleeding a lot between the house and the garage?
Yes. It's combining two parcels, which are under the same ownership, into a single property. Very straightforward.
Right. Anybody have any questions? All right. Under Seeker, this is also a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number four with Board Policy 6. And Sue, we need written descriptions on this one, too?
Yes, we did, Wayne.
And we don't need, there's no buildable area because we're actually dissolving a lot, right?
It's already built out, correct.
Right, so that is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palocco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Evan Roach?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item four is approved. All right. Moving on to item number five, still under public hearings. 34 Franklin Street, it's a special permit renewal to operate a four-room boarding house. Section Block and Lot is 56.93-2-6. Secret determination, Zone R2, Ward 4. Jacqueline Lambert is the applicant owner. Is Jacqueline here?
Jacqueline? Wayne, I think she might be caller number three. Jacqueline, are you on the phone? Okay, I guess she is not with us, Wayne.
Do you want to just move forward with this, Sue, or do we need to table this?
I think we can move forward.
Let me see here, the original when was the original permit granted here? I'm looking on my notes here, and it's a tiny phone, so. Because it had to be a year ago, right?
Right, I believe, I don't know if that was the original. Kyla, do you recall?
I think it only has been one year because I had to ask her whether people were actually residing there.
Anybody have any questions, board members?
This is Kevin Roach. Are people residing there yet? Is it up and running?
I did talk to her on the phone. She said that she does have tenants. She's supposed to schedule an appointment with the Building Department to get an inspection, but that hadn't been done yet. I haven't really talked to her about any other questions.
Okay.
This is Mary Jo. Do we know enough about this to really pass this without her here to answer questions? I mean, she's not residing there, and we're not sure how many tenants she has.
This is Kevin Roach. I agree with Mary Jo.
Okay, everybody else agree with that?
I agree.
Okay.
All right. So at this time, I will make a motion that we table item number five. Allow the owner, occupant, or actually applicant owner to appear before the board to discuss the property. That is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
I would also just add that if we table it, it can be until September, so that would be ample time for the applicant to arrange for a building inspection.
Also, Dan Gartenstein is saying something, but I don't know what he's saying.
You can yell me or not.
Little bit. Yeah.
Yeah, what probably makes more sense is just put it over till the end of the agenda, so if she appears between now and the time you're done, you can address it tonight rather than tabling it now.
Will it just move on to, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, just move on, and if she doesn't appear by the end of the agenda, then you table it then.
Everybody do that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. We shall do, all right. All right, moving on to new business. Item number six is 602 Broadway Site Plan Amendment for renovations to an existing commercial building. And its section Block and Lot is 56.25-3-20. Secret determination, Zone C2, Broadway Overlay District, Ward 4. Morgan Coy is the applicant owner. Morgan has been waiting patiently. I've seen him since we first popped on. How are you, sir?
Nah, no problem. I'm doing well, thank you. Good to see the virtual version of this, so, you know, I'm glad to be here. Thank you. I wish I was here for a better reason, honestly, but I don't know. So.
All right. Why don't you tell us what the amendment, what you're seeing?
Well, so, as you may know, the original plan for this building was to have it be a theater. And I was diligently working at that and actually getting close to being able to actually break ground and make it happen. Maybe for better or for worse. It, COVID happened, and I don't know when the next time a theater is going to be a viable reality at all. So all of the engineering that was holding us up maybe worked to the advantage right now. I'm not, I'm still holding the possibility that in the future, this could happen again. But for the meantime, I'm just gonna, this proposal is taking this existing structure and renovating it, still with some significant improvements. I think you can see from the, it's still holds a lot of the same aesthetic ideas, except we're not going to build up. We're going to keep it one-story, split it into smaller spaces. It just feels a little bit more realistic at this, at this time to say we can have a storefront on the front, we can have another one in the middle, and a small office space in the back. Have it be affordably priced and hopefully continue kind of the work that's been happening on Broadway and bring some life back into this building. So that's a, that's a major renovation. It's gonna, hopefully, you know, I still have to go to Heritage in order to pass it by them, but I'm hopeful that with these current realities and the aesthetics of this building, that it'll still be attractive enough to them and still feel like it's an appropriate look for the area. But to me, this has been about trying to take a vacant building and get some life into it, and the original vision doesn't seem like it's going to work right now. So it's a little step backwards, but I think we can still improve this building and check all the boxes that we had before as far as making sure that there are, you know, trash pickup and parking and all of the things. But instead, it will be smaller spaces that I think we'll be able to rent out and get some storefronts in there and make it happen.
Okay. Go for it. All right. Sue, do you want to, I mean, I see some things there where staff feels landscaping is a nice, just the way that that is presented to break up the long brick building. That's, do you want to talk about some of your notes here?
Right, well, along Broadway, we've provided Morgan with the plans and specifications for the Broadway renovation project that's currently ongoing, as you may see. But in addition to what the city is putting in along the street, we looked at both Broadway and the Field Court, and Morgan is proposing individual planters along the fascia of the building on the inside of the sidewalk area, which I feel are really nice and relevant because they do break up that long brick facade. He's also integrated into that with the new storefronts, some glass and lighting. So that entire facade of Field Court is really going to be transformed dramatically, I believe. If you look at some of his photographs.
Yep.
Morgan, what would be your timeline for these renovations? Because you do still have to go to the Heritage Commission for the Broadway Design District Standards.
Right, well, the August, August, which is around the corner now, so hopefully, they So hopefully, they may have some, some opinions about color, which we're open to. I mean, these are, I recognize that that's, um, you know, and, and these are, we're going to come close to this. I, having worked with them before, I know that they appreciate divided gla, divided light as far as the windows go. And, um, you know, trying to respect the original designs of the building. We're going to throw in some steel, which is a little bit, um, I still feel like it's, it, it will appeal to them, but I'm open to looking at that. But speaking to your question about what the timeline is, I mean, that's really why this design has changed, is because I was motivated to make something happen here. And this is a much easier job. While we were working to make the other one happen, which was going to be three stories, this is something that we feel pretty confident we can do in about five months. Because we're not having to, we'll still reinforce certain elements of the building, but we've already done a large amount of engineering. And we have, um, completed the things that were really holding us back as far as why we hadn't started. And the building is structurally sound. So we might, we'll do a few things to be able to open up some of these windows, but we're very close to actually having a buildable, a building plan, an actual building plan. So our goal is five, five months, is to be able to actually do this. I'm optimistic, as I think you might know, that I think we can do this stuff. But, but the budget is considerably smaller, and we have people ready to work on it, so. And it's a local, it's a local, it's a local job. These are all local people who we work with as far as trying to, to make this happen. So that doesn't necessarily mean it happens faster, but it is, these are Kingston community, you know. So that's my goal, five, five to six months, I think we can, I mean, who knows what the world will look like then? But smaller retail spaces slash offices feels achievable. And I still believe in this block and this neighborhood and, and, um, you know, not having empty spaces is a big thing for me, so getting people in there is, is my goal.
Great, thanks, Morgan. One thing I would just note is that if there is a need for any utility excavation along the Broadway side of your project, that that be done in it, that be done up front before the Broadway improvements along the streetscape are completed. So we don't have to go back in and dig up something that's brand new.
Absolutely. I think luckily, most all of our sewer, or all of the sewers on Field Court. So.
Great.
We shouldn't have to do that.
Good, thank you. That's all I had, Wayne.
All right, any of the other board members have any questions for Morgan?
No.
I have, uh, this is Katie Borski. Morgan, I was just wondering if you had any tenants lined up for these spaces yet?
Um, this is a tough time to say that we do. But I've been, I've been actively trying to put it out into the, into the local community just as, just to let people know that we are building these spaces and that they'll be available. So, well, and, and, um, you know, while I can't say a hundred percent yes, I do feel like there are some promising leads at this point in time. So there's no, there are no contracts signed, but there have been conversations, so. And I, and I just feel like it's kind of important right now to be flexible with people a little bit, you know, like I'm not gonna try and lock anybody into anything right now. But, you know, it's like we were with, uh, with Tubby's. We have a good amount, a good connection with a lot of people who do a lot of different things. And so we're trying to use that as a, as a means of, of putting it out there to people who are local and who are interested in doing things. So I, I, you know, I, I feel like things are going to pass, and I do feel that we will make this an affordable space. So we'll, we'll get somebody in there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Um. So under seeker, this is a type two action. No further review of the board is required at this time. Uh, at this time, I will make a motion, this is Wayne, I'll make a motion that we approve item number six. Sue, can you go over the list of, of, uh, conditions, please?
I will, okay. Um, what I have are board policies four, four A, six, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. That approval from the Heritage Area Commission be a condition that the parking waiver, which was originally granted and is a lesser demand, be carried forward. And that all work, which would need, potentially need underground, uh, construction along the Broadway facade of the building be completed prior to the Broadway streetscape closing up and being completed. And that's what I have.
Great, thank you, Sue, for that. Um, so that's a motion with all those conditions. Do I have a second?
Second, Mary Jo.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Uh, item six is approved. Thank you, Mr. Coy. Have luck with everything. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure I'll see you again. Appreciate it. All right, guys, have a good night.
Good night. Night, Morgan.
Okay, item number seven is seven, excuse me, seven forty-four Broadway. It is a site plan to install new signage in awnings that project over the public right-of-way. Section block and lot is fifty-six point ninety-two dash two dash four. Secret determination zone C two, Broadway overlay district, Ward two. The anchor in perennas, Brandy Walters, is the applicant. Michael McGrath Properties Incorporated is the owner. Uh, do we have anybody from the anchor here?
Wayne, this is Sue. We received an email late this afternoon that the applicant is requesting to withdraw the application due to the circumstances of what work is ongoing right now with the traffic circle at the upper end of Broadway. And they do have another project going on, so financially, right now, they're, they're pausing and asked to withdraw the application.
Withdrawn, thank you.
The most you would make a motion to recognize that request.
I make a motion that we recognize the applicants and owners of item number seven to withdraw their said application. Do I have a second on that?
Second. Charles Palaco, second.
By Charles. All right, all in favor? That is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Joe Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
That is a, that is a doubt. Okay, um, zoning change referral, item number seven. Uh, two dash sixteen Montrose Avenue, referral change from triple R, which is one family residence, to RT, which is Rondow. Section block and lot is fifty-six point forty-two dash four dash seven. Secret determination zone triple R. Coastal Zone Heritage Area Commission, that's in Ward nine. Andrew Wright is the applicant. Bluestone Realty is the owner. Okay. Uh. So the common council has referred the request for zoning change. Seeking our input on this. This is on, if you, Kyle, you can pull the map up there, I'm gonna, if you can do that.
Wayne, this is Sue. Let the record show that both Sonia and Andrew Wright are with us.
Okay, welcome, folks.
Good evening.
Hello.
These meetings go pretty fast.
All right, uh, what? Andrew, do you want to talk about your project a little bit here? What you're proposing?
Sure, can everybody hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
This is, um, when I had the building number two many, many moons ago, this lot is where the school board used to keep their trucks and equipment. And so we've had it for a while. We had pitched this concept a few years back. I remember meeting with, um, oh goodness, I can't remember, not Jim Burner, but down at the fire station to go over how to do this. And then the market came apart, and so it sat. So what we wanted to do, and I've always wanted to do, is to try and recreate that corner with a fairly historic-looking set of apartments where the park can be behind. And in doing that, we also saw that this, the very small tip to the right of your screen is steep and not very usable for any setback, so that the idea of a small park which had been requested by a few people I know in the neighborhood of somewhere to go and sit, nothing major, but a, a nice little green spot. And Mr. Thompson up the hill would like that cleared away because kids always sneak up the hill and jump into a swimming pool. So he thought that would help. And then a small community room with bathrooms and a small possible kitchenette for the tenants would have a place to possibly have meetings, have, um, an office of sorts. In this whole pandemic, we've been seeing that there's a, a big need in our other buildings for people with two-bedroom, one being an office and one where they live. They've realized they don't really need an office elsewhere and can do just as well now with the e-world. So that was the impetus behind this, um, this small community center tucked under the end building. So you have, um, four, fifteen apartments, fourteen was the original setup. We took one apartment divided into two so that we could offer that as affordable housing for those two meeting the, the city request for 10%. The county was also behind that. We thought that's a good idea. And it's a much bigger lot than it looks like in the photos. There's a lot of trees there, so it goes in much deeper. So that, and then we're going to reconstitute the sidewalk all the way down to Pierpont, uh, where I believe that, um, what's the road that goes down to Abil, is that, um?
For the, on the corner.
Sorry, I can't remember, but the, the steep one, that everyone hates to run. But, um, so that'll, that'll, yeah, that's it. And so make a continuous sidewalk for better pedestrian traffic. Uh, it's all low-rise, all the lower units are ADA compliant. The upper ones are just one story up. We try and lay out, this is going to be market rate, two, two-bed, one-and-a-half-bath units with washer-dryers in all of them. We've had great success with that formula in our uptown apartments and in Tilden and, uh, Fort Ewing. So there's a huge demand for this kind of product. So we figured this is the time to, um, to do it. And the triple R zoning was, I believe, Taylor's the only lot left on that block that has triple R. Uh, and we're surrounded by RT, so we thought that this was not an unreasonable request.
Andrew, this is Wayne. Um. I'm going through some of the letters that we received from some of the neighbors. Blue, uh, they reside at two, two West Chestnut Street. There's a water, there's a stream that runs through there. Is it, where is it located on that, on that map there?
If you look at the map, it's up at the uphill side, and it's a, um, it's been called many things. If, okay, you look right behind the house on West Chestnut, go into the lot, maybe a hundred feet or so, about middle. And it's a fissure, which has, um, it's, it's sort of, not so much seasonal, but water comes out that it doesn't. It looks like it might be in RT's and well of sorts. Our intent is to encapsulate it, keep it accessible, keep it underneath the roadway, encapsulate it, and bring it down to the park where we can control it. Because what is, what's done for the last, how many years? Is it's kind of washed down, grabbed leaves, and clogged up the sewer drain, or the storm drain, which is at the bottom of the hill there. So I promised, um, I guess there's an older one before, um, Michelle Hirsch, that we would pipe it in so that it wouldn't bring all those leaves with it. And, um.
And. Okay, how about, is there a lot of, you're going to be clearing a lot of trees on there? There's not much there, is there tree-wise?
There is.
There is, it's predominantly going to be sitting in the cleared area. And we, we're going to keep all the trees up against Taylor's property, which is the north side. And we're going to keep trees on the, over the houses that are there. And then we want to landscape the park area nicely. I, again, promised Taylor I would give him a nice buffer. Uh, but he has a good set of trees going up the hill as well. And the reason I turned all the living rooms towards the inside is when the fall hits, those trees explode in color, so it's quite a beautiful visual, plus the lights behind you. We also wanted to say that we have a grant in to NYSARDA. And if we get it, this is going to be a geothermal, um, heated and cooled property with solar on the roof. But the roofs are flat and the solar will be low, because we don't need a lot of slope, so you won't, with a pair, but we will not see it. And this will be to allow, and there'll be fresh air, they call ERVs in every unit, so that they'll be able to be very tightly designed with good insulation. We, we've done that quite a bit for our clients all over the country. And this would mean that it would also meet and surpass net zero platform, which I always think is a good thing.
Um, the other letter is from, uh, Mr. Kovalesky. Uh, and, and Ms. Ms. Blue also echoes this, the traffic in the area. What, what do you, the, the letter says that, I, I like, I like the concept of having the things up along the street personally. I like that. What, what are your thoughts on the loss of the visual, uh, you know, seeing traffic coming, you know, oncoming traffic or what have you? Do you have any thoughts on that, how that will be affected?
Yeah. We have, um, I don't know, I, I drive by this lot probably twice a week. And if you're coming up Pierpont, you cannot see what's shooting down Montopros until you're on it, because people park along the street there. And when you're coming down Montopros, the traffic comes in the other direction. So it's, I'm going to encourage probably a three-way stop sign, if possible, because people shoot through there like fast. They come firing out of the Hudson. So that's one thing that is a problem. Will the buildings, the buildings, they're setback, I mean, they're on the sidewalks and shots. If you, if you'd like, and we do this in, in New York City lot, and we do something, we'll do a mock-up. I'd be more than happy to show. I don't think it will impede the traffic. I would think the traffic should be slowed down a bit if it's possible because you have tons of kids in that apartment building, a rock right across the street, and they are all over the streets as well. But that's not, we actually am trying to put an offer in to get that building too, so that we can, uh, make the.
The connection.
The connection for what we're doing. So as you come up, okay, seeing our plan, our three modules on the right.
Sue wants to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue, you got a thought?
Uh, yeah, I, I just want to just, um, tell the board that we really need to step back a little. We're not reviewing this at this point as a site development plan or a special permit review. We're not reviewing this at this point as a site development plan or a special permit review, we're really looking at it for the rezoning aspect only. And under the code, if you saw in your staff notes for the board, the planning board's report, in preparing that report. There are four points that you need to focus in on, and one is whether the change is consistent with the objectives and the purpose of the district affected. So looking at that, looking at the RT purpose, I highlighted that in the notes as well. So if you want to read through that, one, the section in there sort of midway is to ensure that new construction will be compatible with the established character. Of the existing development in the district, those, that's an issue that will be. Further developed as we get into a more detailed review under site development plan and special permit review. So that was one thing I wanted to point out, and that the lot layout and the topography and the physical features of the lot will also be. Characteristics that are looked at, but I want you, I want you really to focus on these. Numbers, the second one is the nature and location of uses in buildings to be affected and the manner in which they will be affected. The third item or element is whether the use is permitted by the proposed change will be appropriate in the affected area. And the last one is the effect of the change on the existing or proposed public facilities and services such as schools, streets, utilities, etc. And traffic would be included in that, so. I just want you to, I want you really to focus on what the rezoning is and not the actual specific details, because we do not have a formal application here. This is a concept, it's illustrative only at this point. It will undergo a very in-depth review and this board, I believe, will probably do a very detailed seeker. Review, and as part of that seeker review, you may require a full environmental assessment form, you may require at that time supplemental. Pieces and components such as a traffic impact analysis, which is, you know, where Andrew would really get in depth in terms of what improvements might be needed to mitigate the impacts. Of adding additional traffic, what the current problems are with the level of services presently. Another one might be the stormwater impact analysis, because there is a lot of rock up there. So how all of those items might be addressed would come through under that seeker review process. I just want to kind of bring you back to the rezoning and not focus in so much on the details of the site development plan, but really on what the elements of the rezoning require.
This is Wayne Platt, so I, I get that, but I just wanted to. For the record show that we were, you know, I was looking at the letters that were submitted, you know, as, as part of this, this process, so that was my, that was the. That was my reasoning for going into that, and I agree, we got to stop, we got to stop short of going into the site development stage.
Sue, and this is Mary Jo, but I, I hear what you're saying also, but I needed to hear some of those details, at least what their thought process is. To, to really look at what you're asking us to look at. You know, because I think traffic in that corner, I think that this is going to have a lot, a very large impact on something that's already in trouble there, so.
Right.
It's nice to know what his plans are and, you know, at least preliminarily, so.
Right. I agree.
So I think in order to make the zoning decision, or the recommendation they're asking us for, we needed to hear some of that.
Yes.
Okay.
So. The, the site plan and going back to the details on the plan, it was designed a parking and the width of the driveways are for two cars, so if you notice at the bottom is entrance and. It's also an exit, so it's the same thing at the top, so if the, the three corner, no, it's not a three corner, it's a two corner.
Well.
It's a T intersection, right? So if that's the main concern, so most of the people in that development, they would have their own entry exit. And it would lessen the impact in that, in that intersection. If that helps.
Sue, it's Mary Jo again, he was, I think he was in, going to offer, you know, doing like a mock-up kind of a thing. I, I almost need to see that before I would agree to the zoning, to approve the zoning. I'd like to see how, you know, physically how it will affect that corner and how it'll affect the properties behind him, the ones that are, that are, you know, stating the letters of concern. You know, so we can alleviate their concerns to help the project move forward in some way.
Currently, the trees that are there on the lot are. When, when this is built, most of the trees going down which are blocking a lot of that view now will be gone. And, and also. Coming down the hill, you know, there's going to be, we, we had thought about, and I'm not sure what the process is, trying to incorporate. A three-way stop, because people going along Pierpont kind of see it as Le Mans and they shoot through there very fast. If you come down off Montopros onto Pierpont, it's a crapshoot. I've seen people almost hit me a dozen times, because they come either roaring up the hill or roaring down, so. There's got to be an overall solution. And, but also when you see a vacant lot, you tend to speed because there's nobody there, if you see a building, you might be more careful. But I agree with, you know, we can do sort of mock-up.
This is, this is Wayne Platt, speaking to Joe's concerns, I mean, are these, are these things that you've just mentioned, they're in my mind too, but. That we could take care of that at, at the, you know, when we actually sit down with the applicant, if he makes it through the other, the other process. We could sit down with the applicant and talk about these concerns and, and make it so that it's something that, you know, we would, we would all feel comfortable with, you know?
No, we, we, I'll let you do your thing.
Okay, I also just do want to point out in that, okay, that the board has a 45 day timeframe from the date of referral. Which, Dan, you're on right now, Dan Gartenstein. That, that 45 day timeframe, I believe, started with laws and rules committee last week, is that correct?
Technically, the 45 days started with the council meeting that was Tuesday, was last Tuesday, so technically. You could revisit this at your next meeting and still be within the 45, but then if you. Then you'll have, you know, just a few days to put something in writing and to get it to the council before they would presumably vote. At. Well, I guess they would vote at the September meeting as opposed to the August meeting, but as Sue has already pointed out, this is strictly about the rezoning, this is not about. The specific project that is being proposed, and the code is very specific with regard to what you need to consider. And the issues that you are discussing now are more relevant to the site plan review and the secret review than they are to. The more objective question as to whether or not the property, the parcel should be rezoned.
And that, and this is Wayne Platt, that's what I was kind of getting at with, you know, if, looking at these, at the four issues here that, you know, our report. Would, would consist of, I mean, the other, the other things we can take care of at the actual site plan review itself, that's, that's what I was getting at. So, does anybody else want to weigh in on that as well?
This is Kevin Roach, we, as we're not meeting in August. This is our only chance.
Unless of course you want to meet in August. Special meeting, but if you do not meet in August, then the 45 days will run and you will have been deemed to waive. Your comment strictly on the zoning petition.
Dan, can I, can I ask a question, if the applicants are willing to grant that, grant an extension of that 45 days? Would that be something, or is that a council decision?
That's basically a council decision, they can consent and then the council can still determine. Obviously, given that we're still looking at site plan review, we're still looking at, you know, a potential secret review. Our recommendation would be move forward this evening based on the criteria that is set forth in the statute rather than delaying it further. This is going to be a long drawn out process regardless, and ultimately it's coming back to you.
Can I suggest that we just go through each one of those questions one by one, and if you have any concerns, we'll just include that in the recommendation back? It's not an approve or deny thing, I mean, you can, you can add in your concerns.
And I would also know that under the statute, if there is a process by which the neighbors can. Object to the rezoning and thereby increase the necessary percentage on the council, and the letters that you receive. Are at least from one property owner that would have standing to pursue that course if they want. But the rezoning application is the only thing that's in front of you, and that's a decision that is made by the council, you could formally object to the rezoning. Request if you believe that's appropriate and that would also kick up the necessary percentage to a super majority, but. Particularly given that you're not scheduled to meet in August, our strong recommendation would be that you make a decision tonight and that you go through the criteria as suggested by Kyle.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? If we just look at. The four issues here that we're supposed to look at, whether we recommend or not to send. And then like discuss it later at site plan, all these other issues that are in our mind right now. But that sounds right in my eyes.
If I could suggest the board do just a quick reread of the staff notes first, and then we can. Start and just take a couple of minutes and read through the staff notes. If you have not, because they do hit on all those four aspects, and then we can go back and discuss them one by one.
I'm looking through her notes. So looking at, at the. Requirement of the guidelines for the RT district, it says any new construction will be compatible with established character of existing development in the district. I, I tend to agree that this will be compatible with that, right, we have the, we have the condos basically right across the street. Are you there, Sue?
Yes, I'm here, I'm listening to you, I'm looking for something, go ahead.
I think that this type of.
This is, this is an example, this is what they, they intend to do, what they plan to do, but you have to look at this as you're changing the parcel. You're not doing this for one specific development, they have provided you that information which is terrific. Because that gives you guidance on what the future plan is for them at this time.
So during, so let's say during site plan deliberation, we can. Ensure, you know, we can help that along with that process that this new construction will be compatible with other structures in the area, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, and certainly during the, during the course of the more detailed review for an ultimate project. You're going to have the Heritage Area Commission reviewing this, and you're going to have the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. Providing you with comment in an advisory role only. This is not within the historic district, however, under the code, anything in the RT district does require a referral to that. That commission for a comment and advisory opinion. So you will, you will have that.
Okay, so I think it does touch on letter A there, that. This change can be consistent with the objectives of this district, the RT, right? What, because we're saying that this would become part of the RT, correct?
Yes, it will become part of the RT zone.
This is Mary Jo, I have a question.
So, letters. At Mary Jo.
So if, if it does become part of the RT district and they come along later with site plan. And the board deems that that is not appropriate for that parcel, would they be allowed to deny that? After the zoning change has been made?
I didn't hear the last part of the question, Mary Jo, would they allow to?
So would they, so if the, if it gets changed to RT, if it moves that, if it moves forward with that. And then they come before the board with a site plan for something similar to what they're talking about, or doesn't feel like it's appropriate, would we be allowed to turn that down once it's been deemed it's RT now?
You would certainly retain the ability to turn down the site plan that is presented to you. Either based on a determination that it's an inappropriate site plan or based on secret determinations. You would not be able to turn it down based upon a finding that it is incompatible with the zone, because the finding you're making this evening would be that it is compatible.
So if, if we thought that there was like too many units or the parking wasn't appropriate, like that, that would not be able to be considered?
Well, you can certainly consider that, you just can't consider that based strictly on the fact that the zone should not have this type of development. You can still say that the site plan is inappropriate because there are too many apartments for that particular parcel. Because there's too much of an impact on traffic, because there's, you know, that it's just an inappropriate, you know, site plan for that parcel. You just can't say that based on what you perceive as an incompatibility with the zone that it has been changed to.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Sue?
Yes. Yes. I'm looking for an email.
And again,
This is Wayne Platt, and Mary Jo.
I'm sorry, Wayne, I can't hear you.
I'm losing. Oh, this is Wayne Platt. To, to, Mary Jo, your concern about can we turn something down? Look, he says he wants, he's looking for 14 units, and you, you know, there's been other projects that have come before us that it doesn't necessarily turn out to be the kind of project that it, that it was as, you know, when the applicant first walks through the door. So we, I mean, we have the ability to, to tweak things and recommend things and how we see fit, and to come to a consensus, you know? So it doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be what you've seen today as what the final product will be, you know?
Okay, and I'm not saying that I'm against what he's proposing. I'm just, I'm just, I want the board to have options when that time comes. I, I'm, I think, basically, the basic plan seems okay, so I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against what he's proposing. I just, I just had that question for when we get to that point, what options did the board have? If we needed to tweak it?
I have a question. This is Kevin. I'm just wondering if we give this approval, is there any future issue? What if this project, what if this project justice doesn't come to fruition and they sell the land to someone else? Have we opened up a problem for the future for this land? There's obviously a reason why.
Because Kevin, what you're supposed to be doing this evening is making a determination independent of this project. You're supposed to be looking at the parcel, and you're supposed to be determining going forward whether the proposed zone is appropriate for that parcel. If you decide that it is, and the council decides that it is, any subsequent project, whether it be this one, or a different, or a different developer, will be able to avail themselves of any of the uses that are appropriate in the new zone.
Great, thank you.
Wayne, Chuck. I'm, I, I can't be in favor of voting yes on this, because I just feel that, that I'm being rushed to make this decision. I don't know all the facts, and I don't want to throw myself out there without having all the, all the facts, you know, the transportation, everything that goes.
Anybody else have any questions?
I mean, I've been, this, Mary Jo, I've been leaning the way Chuck is, only because I do feel a little bit rushed. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what else I need to know. I'm still re- rereading the notes as we're talking. You know, I just, you know, it's, it's a, I, I think it could have future, you know, complications, like Kevin was saying, like, if it's not this project, then what would it be? And then we would change the face of that street forever, and we were going to do that anyway. So, you know, it's just, it bears a little consideration, that's all.
Mary Jo, I think, and this goes maybe to both you and to Chuck's concerns and comments, again, if this project were to be abandoned and another developer came forward, they would be subject to the same review as Andrew and Sonia would be in front of the planning board. And you know very well, you know, what we would be looking for, the same, you know, we would be looking at the architecture, we would be looking at its compliance with zoning, we would be looking at all of, you know, the traffic, the sanitary, the storm sewer, we would be looking at, you know, the parking, the lighting, the landscaping, the other site amenities, the sidewalks, the ingress, the egress. So, all of that, no matter what project comes before the board, would go through. It would still also, any project would still have to go before Landmarks Preservation Commission. They would review it in an advisory capacity only, yes, but their comments, I would hope, would be done early on in the review process, and so they could be taken into consideration. Heritage Area Commission likewise has actually taken review in terms of the waterfront consistency, but they would also be providing you with input and advisory opinion on the actual plan itself.
Dan?
I understand. Yeah, I get it.
So, it, it sounds like people are uncomfortable with this. Do you think it's an option? They still have, the common council still has to schedule a public hearing. It's obviously, they're not going to be voting likely before their September meeting. Do you think that it would be okay for the board to request the additional time and have it come back at the September meeting, and just acknowledge that we realize the 45 days are up? If they want to move forward without the recommendation, then they can basically do that?
My position is not deciding tonight without a meeting in August is in essence deciding to not comment. You can certainly request additional time, but under the statute, the timelines are pretty hard and fast, particularly when you're suggesting that you can't meet the timeline just because you're not meeting in August, because you certainly have the ability to come back at the August, you certainly have the ability to schedule a meeting in August to revisit this. I, you can ask for more time. Under the statute, by not voting, you are waiving your opportunity to comment, and the applicant certainly has every right to rely upon that to move the application forward. And any review in court will say that the 45 days is up, and there was no legitimate reason why the board didn't meet their 45 day requirement.
Okay, so if they want to meet in August within 45 days?
You can certainly do that, yes.
They can decide to do that.
This is Kevin. Based on Sue's thoughts about all the different powers that we have to approve anything that's going to come down the pike on this plan, plus also review, just reviewing the fact that this is currently a one-family residence lot that is so out of proportion with all the other one-family residences, it's almost unfair that this is limited to a one-family residence. So I would not see that we need to delay, at least letting this go past this process, this step.
If I could say, to answer some questions, that lot has always been kind of an oddity and an island in what's being developed, and I'd get many different options on what I could do with this, and being over 30,000 square feet, that's rather large for a single I'm sorry. So it just made sense, and this will sharp, we already know, and I've been in Kingston a long time, I've worked on a lot of different things, there'll be a whole process to make sure that every, you know, I is dotted, every T is crossed, because what we want, what everybody wants here is just not to make a dangerous intersection, and to try and bring value to this area, which helps support the Ulster Academy, and it supports a lot of things. We did a lot of research with neighbors in the area. We did check with John Schultes at the sewer department. I did check. I got a call in to Ms. Hanson about water, just to make sure, because I've been around 25-plus years, Wayne, I don't know, and so I've kind of seen what works and what doesn't, and we've always tried to make these work. So we totally know that we'd be going through a process where, you know, it's going to be more involvement, more seeker, and more feedback from the community, and we're very, we're used to that. That's that's part of the process.
Sorry to interrupt. In order to move forward with that process, we need a direction of, okay, for development, as our, on our, we need to present you with the charts, with anything that the RT requires. And so, in order to move forward with all the items that you would like clarification on, you know, we need direction on what zone we're going to work in with.
Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to get off of this one device and onto the other thing here. So, my thought is, is that we can take care of offering a recommendation to go to council tonight, and then discuss all of these issues that we may have with how the site is going to look, you know, the traffic, whatever, that we usually discuss at a site plan meeting, right? I, I think we could take care of all those elements then, and, and like Andrew just said, there's going to be some, you know, and Sue has said, this still has to go through heritage, so there's going to be a lot of other input from other agencies with this. I, I think we can, me personally, I would feel comfortable passing, you know, recommending that this does become a part of the RT district, that we rezone this, and just, you know, if Andrew does have success in getting that passed through, through the council, then they can come back and discuss all these matters with us at site plan review. If that makes sense.
This is Kevin. I agree with Wayne.
And I, and I get what everybody else says. I, Mary Jo, I get what you said. Chuck, I understand what you're saying, but I think that, I mean, we've had a lot of success with other applicants come through with, with site plan, as, you know, we've, we've, it's evolved from something that, it was different from when it was first presented, and we will take care of all those issues that, that we've talked about tonight, you know, the traffic, parking, all those kind of things. But I, I do feel comfortable passing this along with a recommendation to rezone, so.
I mean, do, do other board members feel the same, or is it just, just being overly cautious, maybe?
This is Katie Bowarski. I agree with what Wayne and Kevin were saying. I think that the site size is quite large for a family parcel, so if we're talking about taking this, you know, taking this project out of it and just talking about the rezoning, it's worth pointing out, I think that two of the property lines border the RT zone as well, and it seems to me by the information presented here that the site itself shares a lot of the characteristics with some of the other properties that are in the RT zone, and it sounds like the RT zone is actually more stringent in the review requirements, so I would be comfortable making this recommendation as well.
And this is, this is Wayne Platt. Mary Jo, you, you describe it as being maybe overly cautious. I don't look at it that way. I think that, you know, our board does a really good job of, of passing an applicant through all of our filters that, that we've had throughout the years, and I just think it's not being overly cautious, it's just being thorough, and, you know, and you're, you're one of those, those folks who are very thorough, and, you know, you, but I, I look back to the, to the project on, on the strand, that, you know, you and Robert put a lot of time and effort into making that the best project that it could be. So, it's not overly cautious, it's being thorough, and that's something I think we should, we pride ourselves on, and you're part of that, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, so I, I think that this, this rezoning request hits on all of those points that this board has to look at, and with that in mind, I am in, I, I would like to make a motion at this time that we recommend that this parcel be rezoned into the RT district and pass that along to the common council. That is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Kevin, I'll second that.
Is that Kevin?
It's Kevin.
Okay, so we have a second by Kevin Roach. Any questions on the motion right now before going to a vote?
No.
Okay, all right. So Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
He said yes, but it's muted.
Sorry. And Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is passed. So, Sue, you'll draft a letter to send off to the council then?
I will draft a letter, and I will send it to you, Wayne, for your signature, or you can stop down for your signature.
Okay, and I, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, this board, I'm, I'm proud of the board that we, that, to, you know, to serve on this board, where we're very thorough, and if we do have the, the fortunate circumstance that Mr. Wright come back to see us, I'm sure we'll make it the best project that we can make it, you know, that both sides will be happy with, the applicant and the board, so. I thank you.
One last comment, Wayne, too, just for the board. It is a special use permit type of use, so it would require a planning board public hearing as well. So, that's mandated. You can always require one, but it is mandated in this case, so.
Okay, so, and this is Wayne again. So with a special use permit, that would have to come back for periodic renewals with us anyways, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we have that to fall back on, too. So, that's good. Okay. Andrew and Sonia, thank you for appearing here tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and I'm sorry we kept us a late.
We're looking forward to coming back with more information and address all the concerns that you all have.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Night.
All right.
We do need
We have to go back to item number five?
Yes.
Okay, so the app, that person is not here, right? The applicant is not here?
I do not believe so, no.
All right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number five, which is 35 Franklin Street, the special permit renewal to operate a four-room bed boarding house. Our next meeting will be September, so that is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Kevin Roach.
Second by Kevin Roach. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is, that is adopted. All right, right. Any other business before us, Sue?
That is all I have.
Okay. Folks, thank you so much. Maybe the September meeting will be sitting around a table again, who knows?
One can hope.
All right. Now make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Charles Palaco. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Vince and Katie.
Wayne, Dan's trying to say something.
Go ahead, Dan.
He was just saying, "Good evening."
Oh, okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good, have a good rest of the summer, folks.
You too.
All right, bye-bye.